Started. Before we do our roll call, I'd like to welcome everybody, all of our guests. We have a lot to celebrate tonight. We're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance if you could join me.
So. Which is hands one nation under God. The best will deliver to you and us as well.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Jim Batson. Kara Benjamin.
Here.
Dan Carmichael.
Here.
Kara Drumpey.
Here.
Lisa Hessel.
Here.
Sonal Kulkarni.
Here.
Casey Rooney.
Here.
Great. We note everybody present. Tonight on our agenda, we'll start off with communication. We have some recognition, an invitation for public comment. We'll hear reports from our student school board representatives. We have an educational presentation. We'll review FOIA requests and some good news. Our consent vote agenda includes things that have come out of committee that we've discussed extensively. After we have the consent vote, we will have items for action. Can I ask before we get to the consent vote, are there any items that board members wish to have removed from the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none. After the consent vote agenda, items for action that have come out of committee will be discussed and voted on. We do have some board policies for discussion. And then for information, we have several reports that we will go through before we discuss future agenda items that we might have. We will convene in closed session for the purpose of discussing collective negotiating as well as employment of an employee. Collective negotiating matters under five ILCS 120 slash two C two. And employment of an employee five ILCS 120 slash two C one. After we complete our executive session, we will return to open session for purpose of adjourning the meeting. No further action will be taken at that time. Pardon me. That was a mistake. We may take action when we return from open session. Sorry, when we return to open session from closed session. And then after that, we will adjourn. So back to the top of the agenda, we'd like to start with recognition.
I think we have our principals who are going to lead us off in recognition of our staff.
We're actually going to start with our student recognition.
Okay, then we will start with our students.
When we think about powerhouses in District 128, this group stands among the top of the powerhouses. This is our Special Olympics team, and we've honored them for different sports in the past. This team that we're honoring is our Special Olympics soccer team, who competed at the state and national summer games. And we have a number of amazing athletes to recognize tonight. And to help us do that is their incredible coach, who I believe is here, Coach Andy Compton.
People changing locations.
Right. Thanks for having us. We appreciate it. Yeah, I get to, I get to work with these awesome athletes every week. And they performed above and beyond this past summer. We have a US, we have members from our team that went to the USA Games down in Florida and won a silver medal. It was a unified team. And they are, they encapsulated what unified is all about. If you write down the definition of unified, our team nailed it. They came together as a team early in February. They worked out together. They trained together. They went to training camp together. They roomed together, ate together, but in the end became a solid team, won, competing against other states from around the nation and came home with the silver medal. Members of those, I'm just going to announce that the members that are here today from that team are, are Chase Miller. Chris Morrison. And we have Haley Spitek. Well, from that group. Okay, Joseph Mallor. And my right hand man, and actually I was his right hand man. A lot of the times, Coach Vince DeLuca helped us get into soccer shape and really perform at our best down in Orlando. So Coach DeLuca, take a bow. On top of that, after going down there, we competed against, we had a number of just high profile games. I mean, every game was unbelievable. One, two goal games, decided at the last minute and stuff, really high energy games in 95 degree heat. And it was insane. One of, one of the great things that came off of that is just our ability to take from there and move on. We came back from that four days later, played at the state summer games in soccer. And these three, these two guys over here joined that team as well. And another member of that group, two other members, three, up, two other members of that group were Albinagiza. Ozzy Morales. So that was on a four day cycle there. We completed the one and went to the other. And again, like in the championship game down in Florida, which ended like by one goal. The game in Normal, Bloomington also ended and unfortunately lost to our rivals by one goal at the last second. So they also won silver, but amazing. Now, the golden child of all this, we had to get some gold medals. So our state, our state track athletes who are honored here today. We have Mackenzie Rankie who won the gold. Now, you'll notice here, she also was in Florida. Mackenzie was part of the YL Youth Leadership Experience, which she got to go down there and she got to interview everybody from every different state. All right. And she knew exactly where everybody was. And she actually knew where we were at all times. She was on top of us, just, you know, coordinating things. It was really a cool experience. She really worked like as a PR person down there almost. It was really cool. And she got to know everybody and then some, right? And no matter what, whatever we have to do, if, if anything I said was just a little off and we were a little off time, he corrected me. So we were on top. So, yes. He also was down at state for, and she won a gold medal in the 50 meter and a silver medal in 200 meter down at, down to state meet.
People changing locations.
There are a number of other, I do want to mention one thing because I think he needs a shout out today. Two people, two people need a shout out. Another one, Joseph, come on up here for just a moment. Come here, come here, come here. Get up here, come on. As he's holding this thing here, he's holding this, this is our Jim Rogers, you know, award for the guy who's represented our team the best the past year. And Joseph was a recipient of this this year. And as he says it, yeah, he gave up a limb for this. He actually got, he did broke a bone when he went down in soccer game in Florida. He took a nasty fall and actually had a slight fracture in back in his scapula. And that didn't, that's not why he won. It added. And then we also have another shout out here. Chase was actually interviewed five times down in Florida. He was a hero, you know, national celebrity for a little while, which was awesome. And today, one of our other, I just have to shout this out because he was a trooper today. One of our partners in practice dislocated his knee. And he was part of the USA group. And talk about a tough kid today, that knee, you don't want to see pictures. But I got to see it come out and I got to see it be put back in. Which to me, I would have been in tears, but he handled it like I've never seen him handle it. But I didn't, he didn't cry. Which was unbelievable, but I just, I point that out because he and everybody else, they gave, and gave everything they had all summer long and all during the season. And it's reflective on that. He was so sad that he couldn't be here tonight. He was so sad that he can't take part anymore because of his knee. And he was upset when he couldn't, you know, carry on in that. So it's just those things that we all came together and became a family down there and through this whole thing. You know, one guy goes down, we all are affected by it, but we all pulled together and we come through. So these guys are awesome.
People changing locations. People changing locations.
Okay, congratulations you all. That's fantastic. And speaking of being high atop the mountaintop, we have a couple wonderful libraries. You're sitting in one now. The Vernon Hills Library and obviously the Libertyville Library. If you've been to any committee meetings, that's a wonderful place as well. But we are fortunate as a school to have a wonderful librarian, Monica Caldecott. And Monica in her library won an award. So we're going to honor Monica. Lynn Benson is the CTE supervisor, so her administrator. But I want to invite Linda Sawyer. Come on up, Linda. Linda is with the organization exemplary school libraries, right, with Isle? There you go. She's a librarian and also a part of the, the committee for the honor. And Zoe wants to say a few words about Monica and her team.
Thank you so much. Thank you all. Oops, I have to adjust this for those of us who are vertically challenged. All right. Well, good evening. I am here on behalf of the School Excellence Award of the Association of Illinois School Library Educators. I personally, along with the committee, would like to thank the Community High School District 128 Superintendent and School Board for allowing Isle to join your school board meeting this evening to present the Isle Exemplary School Library Award to the Vernon Hills High School. The Isle Exemplary School Library Award was established in 2018 to recognize school libraries throughout the state of Illinois, which exemplify the Illinois School Library standards set forth in Linking for Learning. This award is presented to any school library in a public, private, or charter school, which has demonstrated an exemplary implementation of the library standards. In order to be eligible for the award, a school library must have a full-time licensed school librarian and a dedicated school library budget supported by the district. Additionally, the school library program must submit evidence of exemplary status from the nominee and a district or building administrator. Through this award, Isle recognizes the school library as an integral component of each school's learning community in which everyone is a teacher, learner, producer, and contributor. We are very, very proud of each library program which has received this award. Past award winners include Tate Woods Elementary Library in Lisle, O'Fallon Township High School Library in O'Fallon, Bellevue East High School and Bellevue West High School in Belleville. This year, there are six recipients for the award. All of these school library programs deserve this award because their programs embody Isle's values of creating an environment which encourages active participatory learning, promotes reading, and fosters collaboration. Vernon Hills High School Library Program beautifully represented these values through evidence supplied by library media specialist Monica Caldecott of the library's collaboration with teachers across the curriculum, resulting in the use of common core and library standards to plan and implement lessons. Working with teachers and students during the history project and hosting the history fair in the LMC and offering students materials in a variety of formats and genres for their reading pleasure. The department chair, Lynn Benson, provided written statements of proof of a healthy library budget, administrative support for ethical use of resources, and giving the library and a voice on several school and district communities, or committees. Through the library media specialists and administrators efforts, the Vernon Hills High School Library truly embodies the values that Isle wants to advocate for and recognize as exemplary in a school library program. As an exemplary school library program, we believe it stands as a model for all other districts and school library programs. We hope other school entities will seek to internalize and represent these same values of collaboration in order to empower students with the essential skills to become lifelong learners, users, and creators of ideas and information. Therefore, it is my great pleasure to recognize the Vernon Hills High School Library as an exemplary library program. And thank library media specialist Monica Caldecott and her administrator Lynn Benson for submitting the application materials. Isle would like to rep, to like to present this award to the Community High School District 128 and community. Would you like to come on up and?
People changing locations. There is a banner that we hope you will proudly hang in your library. And I do want to tell you all, it was a ton of work for them to apply for this. And it's a wonderful program. You're very blessed to have them. People changing locations. Welcome. Congratulations. Thank you very much.
Thank you to everybody who came. We are incredibly proud of the Vernon Hills High School Library and our Special Olympics participants. Moving on, we didn't have anybody sign in for public comment. So I'm going to ask if we have any emailed public comment?
We do not.
Okay. Moving on to the next agenda item, I will turn it over to our student school board representatives for their reports.
I hope everyone's been having a great night so far.
I'm Sarah Wu, and I'm going to start off by talking a little bit about sports. So our student athletes at LHS have been working super duper hard and training every day. But we're also having a lot of fun doing it. So we, a lot of the teams have like fun spirit days or like themes that they have before their competitions. And the swim team actually recently did a fun little one that was for our invite on Saturday, which was barbecue dad versus soccer mom theme, which was very, very fun. And teams also have pasta parties to kind of keep the fun alive while we're, you know, working hard. And it's also, especially for varsity sports, it is sometimes a little bit difficult for students to balance the demand of their sport as well as their academics. And student, and the captain of the swim team, Caitlin Mitchell, when I asked her about how like, how she was balancing the work, she said that it was like a little bit stressful at times, especially since seniors are working on college apps, but she was prepared going into it. So it's only like a decent amount of stress. We have had a lot of, in addition to our little spirit days before our competitions, our student section and their spirit has been amazing. Our first home game against, our football game against Evanston, we sold out the entire student section. We actually had to like move people and make more space because there were so many people there. And it was like a great orange out and we won. And so there was just so much spirit. And we also had a hockey game against Carmel recently. And the student section theme was blackout and we also won that one. And we have another football game against Waukegan this Friday. So of course, the spirit can be attributed to all, like the students that show up, but also the marching band is a huge part of, you know, keeping the spirit alive during our football games. And the marching band, in addition to playing at home games, also went on a trip to Minnesota recently. And they got to play for around 220,000 people in the Minnesota State Fair. And they also took time out of their day recently to play for some hospital staff. And Maya Anderson, a sophomore, said that it was an amazing and fun opportunity to give back to the community. And speaking of our amazing boisterous student section, you know, there is a certain kind of responsibility that comes with having such a great student section and like people showing up because at LHS, we think it's really, really important to kind of set the standard for good sportsmanship and like keeping it clean, even though we have a lot of spirit. And so this month, Mr. Woods, Dr. Kalentis, and a couple other like athletic, I'd be assistant athletic director, I think, has been meeting with seniors and student, like athlete leaders in their sports to kind of just address, you know, like our student section, especially at football games and kind of just talk about how we want to set the standard for like other teams and kind of show that like LHS has a lot of fun, has a lot of spirit, but in the end, our most important values are being respectful of the other team and just making sure that we follow like really, really good sportsmanship. And so for some other events that we've had at LHS, we recently had Yellow Ribbon Week and Green Dot Week, which Yellow Ribbon Week is for mental health awareness and we actually had some seniors do suicide awareness, like QPR training, which is basically like a, like a crisis training to, when someone is in crisis and people got to sign up for that. And also we have a teacher appreciation barbecue coming up and students, through NHS, students will be volunteering to kind of help for face painting, kids games, and making smores. And that's this Friday. And I am on the NHS Executive Board as an outreach coordinator. So I basically set up like different volunteer opportunities for NHS. And it's just been super, super rewarding to be able to do that and to see all of my peers kind of go and volunteer for like, and really make an impact in our community.
Hey, everyone. I hope you're having a good evening. I'm Fatma Menshawi, and I'll be talking about homecoming. So our homecoming theme this year is All Roads Lead to Home, which is highlighting the Great American Road Trip. And homecoming will take place on September 30th, which is a Saturday. And there's a lot going on to prepare and students and faculty are excited. So our first event is this Sunday. Students will go downtown and visit local businesses and help build their window, help paint their windows, sorry. Students will paint the windows with colors of the homecoming theme, All Roads Lead to Home. And they'll also spread orange and black everywhere downtown. This opportunity is a very great opportunity for small businesses to meet new customers and also participate in the homecoming spirit. So throughout the week, students will participate in spirit days. And one of our popular one so far is the City That Never Sleeps. This will be the day in which students dress up in pajamas versus professional attire. And it's kind of like a competition to see which group will win. And then the, the other day would also be Take It Out West, which is kind of like going out to Hollywood. And students would dress up as celebrities or kind of like cowboys and cowgirls. So it'll be also like, kind of like a competition between them. So following that, on Friday is our Color Wars Day, which indicates that each class will dress up in a different color. And all the students will fill the bleachers of the main gym and show, and the class with the most spirit will win the Spirit Cup. And also, also the assembly, the Homecoming Court members will be introduced to a school and everyone will be able to vote. So students on the Homecoming Court are nominated by faculty and other students for being sources of inspiration and empowerment to others. Students who are proud to be Wildcats, who contribute positively to the classroom, they're also involved in and out of school. They're also respectful and kind to all Wildcats and they make sure to live the daring mission. Following the assembly, our Homecoming, our Homecoming Home Football Game will be against League Zurich and it will begin at 7:00 PM. The Homecoming Court students, their parents and families will escort them at the football field and they'll be highlighted there as well. The next morning, which is Saturday, October 1st, the parade will begin at 8:00 AM in downtown Libertyville, and it's being coordinated by the Activities Director, Mrs. Jennifer Ulix, who says, LHS is really excited to be preparing for the Homecoming Parade, where we have several alumni group who will be represented to include the classes of 1970 and the class of 1962, as well as a handful of others. She's also grateful for parent cats who help us organize window painting on Sunday. And will also help 30 student groups and athletic teams to participate. As well as, during the parade, students will, will hand out stickers to highlight the Highland Park Parade. These stickers will have QR codes on them, which will lead members of Libertyville, members of Libertyville Parade to scan the QR code and help donate to the Highland Park Fourth of July Fund. So everyone's really excited for that. So make sure to be there. On the other hand, fine arts are kicking off. Grease is beginning, Grease, which is our fall musical will be on the last weekend of October on the 28th and the 29th. And Senior Reagan McCain said that the cast this year is amazing and the crew is hard at work to build wonderful sets. So everyone's really excited for it. As well as fine arts, clubs are also beginning. And one of, one of the main clubs that started this year is Interact. I'm a part of the Interact Board and today we had our first event, which was Campus Beautification. And Campus Beautification, students helped repaint old garbage cans and we helped make them more visible to reduce waste and help make our campus look fresh for the new year. So then today I also wanted to speak a little bit quickly about Eid. Eid is a Muslim holiday that is very, Eidul Fitr is a Muslim holiday that occurs after Ramadan every year. And Muslims are very proud to celebrate it. And over the past couple of years, we were able to, the board was able to allow us to take a Teacher Institute Day on that day and help us celebrate with our families. So this year I wanted to make sure that we'll have the correct day off. And Eid this year for 2023 will be on April 1st, which is a Friday. And I know the calendar committee is currently meeting to discuss the upcoming years and day off, days off. And I want, just wanted to make sure that the correct day off was going to be this year. And this will just allow students and families to celebrate. Since last year, there was a lot of confusion going on with the wrong day. And it was a lot of work to correct it. So I'm just hoping this year it'll be the right one. But I still am very, very thankful for all your hard work and your effort to help us get this day off. Thank you.
And I'm Jasmine Mafita, and I'll be finishing out the Libertyville High School Board Report. So recently Libertyville High School hosted focus groups that were led by the new Assistant Superintendent of Equity and Inclusion, Mr. Varn. And they were to help understand what different groups at LHS think of clubs there. And students were interviewed throughout the, throughout that week to understand what their feelings were about clubs like API, the Asian Pacific Islanders Unite Club, MSA Muslim Students Association, LASSO Latin American Student Organization, Principals Advisory Board, the Fellowship of Christian Athletes, among other clubs. And the goal of these focus groups was to create understanding and increase equity and inclusion about LHS's clubs. On the subject of clubs, the Latin American Student Organization, or LASSO, was just formed this year. And it's a club for students that identify as Hispanic or Latino to learn about and celebrate Latin American cultures. The leaders of the club are Ms. Espinoza, Mr. Avila Miranda, and Ms. Feeny. And the big, their first big project has been for Hispanic Heritage Month, which is this month from September 15th to October 15th. This past Thursday, LASSO painted all, painted like the cafeteria windows and helped set up for, and helped set up various decorations around the school to celebrate Hispanic Heritage Month. And there will also be a unity lunch hosted this Friday by LASSO. As well as this, there'll be a churro sale on the 29th during the week of homecoming. I myself am Latin American and I was really excited to see this club form. And a lot of my friends are also Latin American. So this is just, this has just been really cool for us to be able to have a group like this. So I'm really excited to see where this club goes and I'm really excited to be a part of it. As well as this, the Black Student Union hosted a workshop this month about what it's, that essentially to promote, to promote social, emotional health and wellness for African American students. There were different panels there, like what it's like being black in District 128. The key, as well as a panel with parents to discuss their experiences. The keynote speaker was Quabina Nixon, who is a motivational speaker. It was meant to celebrate different African American cultures and identities. And it was organized by Ms. Scott, Mrs. Powell, and Ms. Espinoza. So that's been a really great. So that's been a really great, so that was really great to see that LHS and D one twenty-eight as a whole are doing a lot for equity and inclusion. Going away from that topic, there has been a lot of confusion this year about the final schedule that was recently released. Last year, we had finals in some classes, but there was no real official final schedule where certain days were taken out as finals days with a different like time slots. Like this year, we're gonna have two different days with four periods, class periods per day where teachers are able to administer finals. And this year, as well as last year, teachers will get to decide if they would give finals. For the last few years, we haven't really had any real final schedule and our class, the seniors, are really the only ones who have been through an actual finals week. But, so this has caused a lot of confusion for juniors and underclassmen. Finals are still technically optional, even though we have a final schedule for the teachers and some teachers are giving them, some aren't. I myself only have one or two finals, but I know a lot of my friends who have finals in nearly every single one of their classes. And at least in my experience, a couple of my teachers just haven't told us if we have a final yet or they haven't made that clear. So that's been a little confusing and it's like leading to a bit of stress among the students. And also the lack of uniformity in which classes have finals and stuff like that has been a little tough for students. For the most part, students aren't too happy about this because finals are pretty stressful. As well as this, a more specific concern, since there are only, since there are only two finals days instead of three, some seniors who have experienced finals in the past are concerned about the fact that they might have more finals in one class. Senior Megan Skinner said, "I'm nervous about maybe having four finals in one day since they condensed the schedule. It seems like a lot and it will be super stressful." Lots of students wish we had stuck with our previous schedule where teachers could give finals, but there was no like official schedule, so we just stuck with the forty-five minute class periods. However, others like the new final schedule. Since last year, some teachers would administer finals over multiple days and that was really stressful and it stretched out the process. Overall, it's kind of new territory, so students are a little scared. And there's also a lot of lack of uniformity among it, so that's adding to some of the confusion. But at least for me and some of my friends, we're optimistic that we're gonna learn more and that we're all gonna be able to come out of this unscathed at the end of the finals week. But, um, that's our board report. Thank you so much.
Hi, my name is Sophia. School atmospheres are thriving with the chatter of students as they work through new research questions and labs, struggle for the answers to math problems, and confront the first couple units of their hardest classes. But as more of September is revealing itself, so is the desire for students to be involved beyond their classrooms as advocates, members, and leaders. Just a few weeks ago, several student groups focused on identity, religion, and ethnicity had the opportunity to meet with Mr. Varn to discuss school culture in both positive and critical lenses. For sophomore Maddie Thomas, it was an unfamiliar yet productive experience because it gave her the opportunity to be heard. Being in the Dare to Empower Focus Group myself, I can second that. It allowed me to extend my voice beyond the bounds of a classroom, talk about the lack of female identifying students in VHHS STEM courses, the lack of representation of minorities in AP classes, the only-girl dance locker room, the limitations present in the grade system, and all the things I love about the school, from the staff to the boisterous and thoughtful atmosphere during Hoco Week and Yellow Ribbon Week. Senior Dylan Lusum said he hopes the board will be active in addressing the issues he presented, even if he's not at the school anymore to see the change. For senior Ashley Shoemaker, it was also an eye-opening, even inspirational opportunity to hear the voices of the LGBTQ community who expressed how frequently flattened they feel due to casual and homophobic microaggressions. This year, being eye-opened is necessary. In response to the Highland Park shooting this past summer, for example, the library created a bracelet-making project to give students the opportunity to send empowering messages in bracelets to the Highland Park Elementary School. Thus far, there's been about forty bracelets made and sent. And though it can't reverse the tragedy or save the lives lost, it's one little act that librarian Nina Farolo and Monica Caldecott, the organizers of this project, have said was their way to show support and find strength together. Because together we can achieve more, right? For sophomore Tania Henry, the support, strength, and empowerment she felt was bombarding and inspiring during the Black and African-American Student Workshop held at LHS for D one twenty-eight students. From the start of the event, she was awed by how unfiltered, authentic, and profound it was, listening to the words of well-known guest speakers and to the vulnerable spaces she created with her peers. She learned about the legacy she wants to leave, the possibility she has. It was refreshing for her. And she's, and as she said, "It was cool to see people who looked like me in different work areas." Which made me wonder, why is it that she isn't seeing people that look like her on a daily basis? Particularly, it made me think about the lack of racial diversity among our teacher staff and all the students like Henry, whose idea of a leader may only be as broad or narrow as our majority white staff leaders. For the most part, though, things have been good. COVID, a still very present and serious disease, is now part of our normal as we continue to return to activities. In three days, one of our most important events of the year is occurring, color competition. And then, and I, as well as my peers, truly believe seniors will be winning that.
Hi, I'm Ardel. Um, store shelves being left barren of poster boards by eager homecoming goers and pants taking over shorts as the popular student selection among the student body signals the arrival of fall, a time jam-packed with student activities. A major highlight of the season are football games, where Vern Hills High School students could be seen on Thursday acquainting future students with the pep band and dance team. Eighth graders from District seventy-three middle schoolers, middle schools, joined high schools, uh, to participate in halftime performances and the prior group practices as a way to explore high school activities that will be available to them. Mr. Sundell, the pep band's conductor, underscored the value of being able to play with the older kids and have some fun in a tradition stretching over fifteen years. Eighth-grade band members arrived at Vern Hills High School a few hours before the game to join in a pizza dinner provided by Cast and to rehearse the Meghan Trainor hit to be played at halftime. Amanda Handoko, a senior on the dance team, shared that the, the dance team helped to review a routine that the middle schoolers had learned over the summer, marking Thursday as the culmination of an ongoing project with D one twenty-eight and seventy-three dancers. The future business leaders of America at Vern Hills felt a shift in leadership following the retirement of Mr. Isabella last year. Mr. Voss has filled the spot. Ready leverage his thirteen years of debate coaching towards readying students for competitions. He described his experience so far with the club in only one word: great. An apt description for the club's approximately one hundred attendee headcount at the first club meeting. With the new team, new advisors, and new year, Mr. Voss has prioritized student outreach to determine how to keep improving the club for the future. Finally, a form requesting student opinions on the food available in the cafeteria offers insight into what Vern Hills High School students hope to see from the new lunch provider. With three hundred students that get food from the cafeteria responding, the responses represent a broad consensus among students. While a majority of students reported some level of ease to finding healthy food options, over sixty percent of respondents indicated that they'd like to see more healthy options available. Two main conclusions stood out from the data. With nearly a quarter of students selecting plant-based lunch options, ensuring that robust options are available is a priority. While a majority of these students believe that there are enough healthy nutritious plant-based options, a similar majority does not believe that the monetary value of their lunch selection is comparable to options of meat. This value difference, for example, can be seen with the taco station. Students not selecting meat from the station pay the same price as students selecting meat fillings for their taco. To get similar protein content as a meat taco, students can request an extra scoop of beans. However, this choice bills as extra meat, incurring an additional dollar. The second conclusion was raised by students who identified as participants in the reduced-price lunch program. They pointed out that lunch options for participants were limited, with specific items eligible for the program. One student wrote that they often end up having to commute home for food or packing a lunch because it's not ideal eating the same limited choices every day. While characterizing the program as very helpful, they believe that improvements can be made to food choices and range for reduced lunch. Others mentioned that the limited choice wasn't filling for them. Overall, students seem to be happy with the options and nutrition available to meat and plant be, plant-based eaters alike and are especially appreciative for the coffee and smoothie bar addition. While there may, may be ways for the new lunch provider to adapt as it settles into Vern Hills and learns the needs of our student body, cougars seem optimistic about their cafeteria experience.
Hello, everybody. My name is Hari Jhan. The month of September has been very eventful. Yellow Ribbon Week started September seventh, led by Mrs. Dylan and Spark, one of the prevention clubs at Vern Hills High School. Mrs. Dylan provided that it focused on mental health awareness and suicide prevention. Students were involved in activities such as the You Rock Kindness Activity, Be a Lifesaver, and the Lift Each Other Up Activity. These activities encourage students and staff to be kind and, most importantly, reduce stigma around mental health. Additionally, a social-emotional learning survey was sent out to the student body. Mrs. Dylan elaborated that this survey helps to get students' perspective on their sense of belonging and the level of support that they feel at Vern Hills High School. This survey is not anonymous, but the responses are confidential, and if a student needs help, they are able to receive it. Certain clubs and classes have begun more team-building activities to unite the students and set a strong foundation for the start of the school year. Vern Hills High School Choirs went on a retreat on the tenth through the eleventh, where students were able to sing and spend more time with their peers. The cross-country team had a volunteer opportunity at Rugged Maniac, which was permitted this year by the state of the pandemic. However, there has been a recent shortage of buses for field trips, which results in a slight inconvenience. Friday night lights turn into Thursday night lights? For the first time in a while, Vern Hills High School had a football game on the Thursday of September fifteenth instead of Friday due to a shortage of referees. The games had to be spread out, which caused this game to take place on a Thursday night instead of Friday. Nevertheless, the Cougars showed up with abundant school spirit and excitement. As the school year has picked up its pace, students have taken numerous assessments. This means that the retake policy has frequently been utilized by various students. Following the looser retake policies of the twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-two year, some teachers brought into question what their reassessment policy would look like this year and if they should change. One difference is that more teachers are offering test corrections rather than full reassessments of material to the students. Along with that, when students were asked if they believed that the reassessment grade should be a replacement grade or an averaged one, an overwhelming majority of students said that it should be a replacement grade. Senior Shriya Praveen and Dylan Tirani claimed that the reassessments are the most recent display of a student's knowledge, so it should be a replacement because the students are choosing to put in the work for the retakes. The week of homecoming starts on September nineteenth and the Cougars are ecstatic. Monday is Jersey, Jersey Day, Tuesday is Summer Swag, Wednesday is Snow Day, and Thursday is the beloved Color Competition. Each grade will be decked out in their red, green, yellow, and tie-dye gear and the Cougars are ready for some friendly, but not so friendly, competition. Lots of Cougars expressed enthusiasm regarding this week and one junior added that it is much more exciting and makes this year feel more normal than before. The Cougars are excited for more to come.
Nicely done. Thank you. Um, any questions for our student school board reps? Okay. Thank you to all for your good work and, um, we look forward to seeing you next month. Um, we have an educational presentation from, um, our treasured Libertyville High School German teacher Heidi Lechner. Um, so to introduce her, um, is she, I'm sorry. Dr. K, are you gonna introduce her? Does this serve as an introduction?
German teacher at um, who's gonna talk about, uh, summer experience that she had, um, and, um, a, maybe touch a little bit upon, obviously, the role that you play in
Yes, I was, that's what I have it here for my notes. Hi, good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me and inviting me tonight. Um, my name is Heidi Lechner and I teach at Libertyville High School. This is my ninth year with the district, my twenty-eighth year in education. I am predominantly a German teacher. That is what I've been doing for my career. Um, up until a few years ago, when I started as an instructional coach at Libertyville. And this year, for the first time, I'm teaching English, classic literature, to make, shake things up a little. Um, I am also a instructional coach for the Gerta Institute, which is sponsored by the German government. And I am, it's strange name, but a German Educational Multiplier, which is a gem, uh, for an acronym. And for that, these are all side gigs or volunteer work for helping other educators in the German network in America. For instance, Saturday, I spent at Valparaiso University, I led a workshop on sustainability and, uh, for six hours with twenty-four German educators. It went fabulous, but I'm kinda tired. Anyway, so I'm here to talk about, oh, a, um, fabulous, I can't even think of any, enough, uh, adjectives, but I went to a, uh, conference in Vienna, Austria, the first week of school. So I'm here to say thank you to the board and the district for supporting me both financially and for helping me um, through the stress of planning for missing seven, the first seven school days. I came in the first day, said hello to all my students and said, "Goodbye, I'll see you in, in a few weeks or a week and a half." Um, Tom, Dr. Kalentis, was very, very supportive because this was supposed to happen two years ago at the start of, um, August. And because of the pandemic, it did get postponed, um, so I applied to present at this conference over a year and a half ago. So yes, this has been a long time in the works. Now, this is, I've never attended this conference. I've presented nationally, um, many times over the last few years. This is my first time presenting internationally. And the conference, I, as you can tell, it's, you can't read the infographic, but that was our schedule. It was a action-packed, uh, we had everything from, um, workshops to lectures. There was music, uh, in the evenings. We had networking sessions. Um, it was really wonderful and in German, of course. Um, I've never been to Vienna, even though I teach a Viennese unit. And so that really brought it to life. So it is possible to learn things over the internet and present them in a great way. Um, but now, having seen Vienna, I have a lot more to add to my students. Uh, there were three thousand attendees from over a hundred countries. I met people from Azerbaijan, from Poland, from Ukraine, from Venezuela. I mean, it was, we were German teachers from all over the world and it was pretty phenomenal, um, to share with, you know, what resources do you have? What books do you teach? What is your schedule? Um, as we know, America is definitely a leader in technology in, in the classroom and that definitely showed. Um, and in the resources we do give to education. So, uh, I did join, so you had to join a specialty section. There were over fifty of them, including Afro-German, um, gender, uh, grammar. I mean, they ran the gamut film. Um, I chose one that is near and dear to my heart. Which is playful learning. And for the last, I would say, eight years, that has been my focus in the classroom is not necessarily gamifying, that is a trend, but also making a, Beau, the next slide, please, another, uh, I don't know, an atmosphere where students want to learn, they feel comfortable, they feel happy and want to come to my elective every day. And that is my mantra. If you are not looking forward to this class every day, then I'm doing something wrong because you chose this one precious time of the day to spend with me. Um, so this was my presentation. It was translated as Success with Edutainment, which is education plus entertainment, as the cornerstone of the German program. And we have a hard time, you know, trying to get students to take German and to take languages. We're an elective. All electives are fighting for the same students. So it, what it does, it builds a lot of classroom community um, and it lowers the effective filter. So the kids, I'm encouraging them to speak from day one. That is my focus and they do, and they have a great time. Tom did not say it, but we do use a lot of music and dance and art and all sorts of, uh, digital games, analog games. And it is a comfortable learning atmosphere. Um, and I would like to point out on the bottom bullet point, the material I choose definitely ensures the rigor. German three and four that I teach this year are also dual-credit courses with the College of Lake County and they count for intermediate one and intermediate two college courses. And students receive eight college credits if they go through the program for four years. Um, and the methods that I use do ensure success. So while it sounds fun, which it is, it is also rigorous and students are learning at the same time. And Beau, I have just some pictures from last year that I used in my presentation to showcase what we do. All the digital games and analog games that you can think of. Over the pandemic, I just switched up and did everything online and found new ways to keep the kids entertained while on Zoom. Um, yes, we did dance, even though I was the only person dancing on Zoom and the kids just looked at me funny. Don't know if you had any of those teachers. Um, yeah, we use Play-Doh. It's, it's kindergarten, but we're using higher-level, um, thinking skills. Uh, you name it and we've tried it. Um, yeah, and I think that is it. So those are just some photos from Vienna. It was, um, a wonderful seven days immersed in the language and in the culture and networking with colleagues that I know around the world, basically, um, many that I work with through my professional development from all fifty states in Germany and Austria. And I came back refreshed, I have to say, last year. Hardest year in twenty-eight years, um, and I'm loving life again. And I just wanted to thank the district for supporting me in this. And I'm loving life again, and I just wanted to thank the district for supporting me in this, and the kids were great. When I left with the sub for seven days, I came back and they were still intact and had learned a little bit, and we're off and running again. So, thank you.
You for reporting back on your experience and for the outstanding job you do for our students.
If I could just add that Frau Lechner is an example for our community of just how our board supports our educators. An opportunity like this would benefit any educator, but for a teacher of a world language to be able to travel to that country or to a country that where that is the native language and to immerse in a professional conference that caliber is not something that is available to every teacher across the state. It's a commitment that District one twenty-eight makes to our staff's professional development because we know that what Frau Lechner learned in Austria comes back directly to our students and benefits our program. So as a principal, I'm grateful to our board for the support that you give so that our staff who are among the best in the best continue to get even better through their professional learning experiences. So thank you.
Thank you. Well, moving on from fun, we're going to do a little bit of a one eighty and discuss the foyer requests, which are
Yes, which are brief. This this month, we received one foyer request, and it was a commercial request for purchase rental lease and maintenance agreements for postal information. That took fifteen minutes, and we responded on August twenty-fourth. So short and simple for those.
Great, thank you. And now we're going to go back to some fun and hit some good news.
Yes, and we have some very good news to share. Fifteen of our one twenty-eight seniors have been named semifinalists in the sixty-eighth Annual National Merit Scholarship Program. The National Merit Scholarship Corporation named over sixteen thousand semifinalists in the two thousand twenty-three program. These academically talented high school seniors have an opportunity to continue in the competition for some seven thousand two hundred and fifty National Merit Scholarships worth nearly twenty-eight million, and those will be offered next spring. So our semifinalists are from Libertyville High School, Adida Jakara, Samuel Lamb, Belinda Lee, Jasmine Lafita, Omar Mahmoud, Chase Hauser, Charles Verkulyn, Sean Poach, and Zheng Zhu. We also have students from Vernon Hills High School. David Wang, Chloe Boat, Anaga Shriisa, Jacob Wang, Jeffrey Brahms, and Ariel Shifrin.
Congratulations and best of luck as you continue. I know that you are going to make us proud because you already have.
Yes, way to go. We have two other pieces of good news to share. One, the Marching Wild Pets took their show on the road earlier this month. Students and staff traveled to Minnesota to participate in many musical activities. Highlights included a clinic and campus tour at the University of Minnesota and a parade performance at the Minnesota State Fair. And finally, I know it was mentioned at the committee meeting last week, but I wanted to make sure we celebrated it here at our regular meeting. The D one twenty-eight school board has been recognized for excellence in governance award. It is a two-year designation that recognizes school boards and governance teams for exemplary performance in policy, finance, strategic planning, onboarding new members, and participating in board development activities. The school board will be recognized at the Lakes Division Meeting of the I A S B on October twelfth. So congratulations to the seven of you.
I think we're going to do a picture. I A S B asked if we could, to recognize us, submit a group photo that we don't happen to have. So I'm going to take this moment to take a group photo.
Yeah, sure. All guys on the outside. Yeah. Photographically, I like the maniac. She wants some of the outside. It'll balance, but you can't see it. Now we're balanced.
You know. Ninety percent of people get kind of finalist.
Okay, thank you for tolerating that brief interlude. Now we have arrived at the consent vote agenda. The consent agenda includes items that are routinely approved by the board with a single motion, approving minutes, destruction of closed session recordings, educational tour requests, employment matters, disposable of obsolete capital equipment, bills payable, and financial reports. These items have gone through board committee review and recommendation. Documentation concerning these items has been provided to all board members and in public in advance of the board meeting to ensure an extensive review. So.
Carmichael, move to approve the consent vote agenda.
Rooney, second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Colcarney.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Great. The consent vote agenda passes. We move on to items for action. I will turn it over to P and P Committee Chairperson Jim Batson to do, to introduce the items that have come out of committee.
Okay, first up here is a employment of employees. These are a handful of employment actions that came in after our committee, so are separated out into a separate agenda item here. So can we have a motion and a second for this one, please?
Hessel moved to approve the employment of employees.
Colcarney, second.
Okay, any questions or comments? Hey, if not, roll call, please. Carol.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Colcarney.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Okay, that motion passes. The next one is a revised administrative contract. We had to make a an adjustment to one of our administrators' contracts after it was initially presented. So can we have a motion for this one, please?
Move to approve the Director of Building a Ground Retirement Contract. Carmichael.
Rooney, second.
Okay, any questions or comments?
So this is just revising the, a date, correct?
Yeah.
That's the only revision to the contract? Great.
It changes the dates and it changes the ending date, retirement date, and then obviously, we prorated the salary for that year instead of ending on June thirtieth. So back to me.
Okay.
Thank you for the clarification. Any other questions, comments? Roll call, please.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Colcarney.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. It looks like these are all P and P items this month. Casey, you get off easy. And next one is intergovernmental agreement with the College of Lake County. This is a, an agreement similar to what we've agreed to with our, a few of our center districts for data sharing so that we can learn from each other, how our students are doing, and they can learn a little bit about the students coming to them. So we have a motion for this one.
Hessel motion to approve the shared data agreement for educational study between Community College District number five three two Lake County, Illinois, and Community High School District one twenty-eight Lake County, Illinois.
Second. Drumkey, second.
Okay, any further discussion, questions? Okay, roll call, please.
Hessel.
Aye.
Colcarney.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. I'm on a roll here. Labor.
I do have a point of order question. Since we discussed that in committee, why isn't that part of the consent vote agenda?
So although we discussed it in committee, the consent vote items are something that normally, normal business items every month or could be every year that you do. And so although we discuss it in committee, it's not something normally that is voted on in consent.
Not a routine type of adoption. And then the rental labor charge, rental labor charge rates. This is an adjustment to our rates that we charge outside organizations when they rent our facilities. And we pass on the labor rates for people that assist with those events within our facility. So we review these on a regular basis, so this will be the, the new rates for this year. And this was reviewed in committee as well, so.
Carmichael, move to approve the rental labor charge rates for fiscal year twenty-three.
Benjamin, second.
Okay, any questions, comments? Okay, roll call, please.
Colcarney.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Motion passes. Can we continue? We're moving on to our four discussion items under number five. We do have a first reading of a board policy. Actually, no, action needs to be taken on this. This is a fund balance policy that we discussed in committee. We will have another opportunity at committee next month, and then this will come up for a final reading and adoption next month. Any comments or questions related to this? Okay, we just had to have it on the agenda as a first reading. So a hearing done, that concludes that list. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Moving on to items for information, I'll turn it over to Dr. Herman for the superintendent's report.
Sure. Bo, if we could put up those slides. First thing I'd like to report on is the strategic plan and work that we've done since the last meeting toward those goals.
Dr. Herman, Superintendent.
I think there's a couple slides before that one. Okay, so I wanted to remind people of our strategic plan that we adopted in terms of the three goals. One refinement that we made to the overall roadmap. Mary and I have been working with some consultants to help reframe our website to accept and communicate our strategic plan and also for a mailer. And one of the things that they quickly asked us to consider revising was the word strategic delimiter, even though it's a very common term used in the strategic planning world. It really wasn't very reader-friendly. So we got out our thesaurus and we selected strategic boundaries because that's a similar meeting, what it is, again, reminding us, it's what we are not going to do, what we're going to avoid doing, so we are able to still focus on our strategic priorities that we set. Next slide. So I wanted to remind everyone, this is from opening day where we are. We are in the planning for implementation phase. We selected the goals, but you meet goals by taking actions. And so this fall is an opportunity for staff and students and parents to have input as we create the actions, the verbs we're going to be doing, and the metrics by which we will hold ourselves accountable. Next slide. And just to remind everyone of our three goal areas, we have health and well-being. Excuse me, equity and inclusion, and exploring multiple paths. And again, when we first shared this with the board, there were possible action plans that we presented, and I know some of you described ones that were very important to you. Those are still in the mix of what is being considered by the action planning teams. And on September sixth, so next slide. We started the implementation process, really making sure that the staff fully explored all of those options. There's many ways that we could reach our goals, and we wanted to make sure the staff had opportunities to, again, review the data, learn from people from other schools or other models for examples of ways other schools have explored multiple pathways or the way other schools have tackled some of our equity and inclusion goals. We will be now working with the volunteers. There were over seventy people who volunteered to serve on the different action planning teams, who will take all of that input and now work their magic in terms of reaching consensus and deciding what we can do, remembering the advice that the board gave of not doing all of the things, but to focus on some of the things that are meeting two or more outcomes with the same action. So we will be working to crunch all of the feedback. Next slide. It was a very interactive day. Staff, it was held here at Vernon Hills High School, and all staff were in mixed groups. They selected two of the three goals. We selected two so they would have time to go more in-depth into two of the three. And again, very hands-on. Next slide. We are processing all of the products that they developed, and that's what will be shared with the action planning teams as well as shared with the two building leadership teams. So again, we're on track to create action plans that will be presented to the board in December of this year. So again, very successful Teacher Institute Day.
Great, and I am very grateful for all the teachers who not only participated in the Institute Day, but have been willing to go above and beyond to volunteer for some more, the hands-on work that you'll be facilitating. So thank you to all of the teachers who are doing that.
And that's all?
Oh, great. Okay, a brief superintendent's report. We move on to the Financial Year Twenty-two Employee Compensation Report.
This is a report for fiscal year twenty-two. Last year's report is required by state law, so it's required to be presented at a board meeting. It is hereby so presented. You don't have to take action on it. And then it's a, it's already filed with the state.
Great, thank you for doing that, and we were presented with this reporting committee. And thank you for keeping us in compliance. Moving on to board comments and events, does any, does anyone have anything they'd like to share about events they participated in or some learning that they were able to take, take advantage of?
I, a few years back, I was asked by the Village of Libertyville to participate in their long-term comprehensive plan process, and out of that, they asked me to sit on a few commissions within the village and represent the district on those. So keeping up our intergovernmental relations, I am very happy and proud to do so. And that came from that meeting tonight.
Great, thank you for doing that.
Yeah, happy to.
Great. Anyone else? Okay, moving right along.
I think you served on the committee last week.
It's, yes. Keeping track.
Yes.
Yes, the calendar committee. We had a very productive meeting and And I think that was the 13th year I've done that as a parent, as a board, as a community member and as a board member. So I thank you, Senia, for leading a very productive and interesting meeting as always. It's, it is a real challenge to put the calendar together for this district. There's a lot that has to be considered and it's a, an interesting process to be a part of. So.
And that will be coming to the board in October at committee and then to vote at our October.
Okay, great. Thank you for doing that. Your many years of experience are a benefit to the district. So thank you for your participation, representing the board, representing parents, representing the community. It's terrific. And I know, Bryant, you also serve on that committee. And you bring your many years of experience.
When I have calendar questions, I call Casey.
Enough said.
There you go. No, I'm happy to do it. I enjoy it.
Wonderful. Thank you. Moving on to item D, the IASB report.
Yeah, we have a couple of things. And actually, this is sort of is part of my involvement in things. You've gotten notice, all of us, about the Lakes Division Dinner Meeting coming up. So I encourage if you would like to attend. And then in light of what was announced tonight, they will be presenting us with that award at that dinner meeting. So I serve.
You will have company this time.
Yeah, yeah, I might have, I might have.
I know I'm attending.
I'm attending.
Anybody else?
So I will be out of town.
You'll be more than.
We heard about that.
Italy.
Going to be in Italy.
Little jealous. Sorry, interrupt you. Moving on.
That's okay. So if anyone has a change of plans or wants to sign up for that, feel free to let Carol know. This is something that I've actually been involved with over the last few months, planning for this meeting as as our representative to the Lakes Division Team there. Each of you also received the delegate assembly document. This just came out today, I believe. This is something that the delegate assembly meets during the joint conference in November. I once again will be representing our, our district at that assembly. Have it, have a look. We'll get a chance to discuss these at a future committee meeting. We have a couple more before that conference happens. So if you get a chance, take a look at those. And they're not, you know, it's a pretty typical list of, list of items in terms of quantity. So just take a look. And then on a related, this is an IASB, but it's related, the Ed Red Luncheon, Fall Luncheon is coming up. So if anyone wants to join us there, actually, it's moved so it's closer to where we are. It's in Northbrook at the Hilton Chicago in Northbrook. So it's not quite the drive. It's a little farther for me coming from work, but that's not so bad. So if anyone wants to join us, that's on the October 6th, 12 to 3. It's actually usually a pretty good luncheon meeting, usually good speakers there. So if anyone wants to join us on that, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Seadoll.
I have a report. So at the last Seadoll Governing Board meeting, forgive me, I'm on my phone. I forgot my laptop and I have my update here. Anyhow, we passed our fiscal year 23 budget, which was something that needed to be done from the previous board meeting. So that was good. Rather, it was a delay. So finally got passed. We, let's see, other major things. We had a report on the E S Y program that Seadoll facilitates on their campuses, which is an extended school year and a program that allows for vocational training programs. So we just kind of had like a report similar to what Frau Lechner did for us here. We had a member of their staff kind of provide information on that. We can see what Seadoll is up to in the summer. And then additionally, there was a big report delivered regarding staffing issues that Seadoll is going through, like many other educational organizations all over the country. Seadoll is also suffering from a major lack of staffing. Everything from classroom teachers, four speech pathologists, 30 para professionals, two custodians, social workers, two registered nurses, an occupational therapist, six sign language interpreters and an audiologist. And the reason why I'm reading those all off is simply kind of as a note to the public, if anyone's tuning in tonight, if anyone knows anyone who's looking for work in any of those areas, you are in desperate need. It may be a great time to come out of retirement. Any, anyone looking for an opportunity, working with a wonderful group of professionals and students, you can look at the Seadoll website. So I will have more to report when December rolls around.
At the same time, can I make up for all the things here at fiscal year 120? We're not in as, as big a need as Seadoll. But our needs still, we do have teacher aides available and special services at Libertyville High School. Couple positions, one at Vernon Hills, physical offer teacher aide at Vernon Hills that will actually be open at the beginning of January. We're still looking for a computer technician at Libertyville, part-time registered nurse, nurse for our transition pathways program, part-time cafeteria monitor at Vernon Hills. And then also a Spanish speaking EL aide for Vernon Hills and a Russian speaking EL aide here at Vernon Hills. And also, we will also take people that want to be substitute teachers. So we have sent out that information. It's been put into paw prints and on social media. So we do have some openings. And I think every school is struggling and Seadoll is struggling with openings. And so if you do know of anyone, please pass them along to us.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you. And thank you, Cara, for your, the extra time that you spend for Seadoll. They're an important partner of ours and we appreciate you reporting back.
Sure.
Any other reports that board members wish to share? Okay, moving on to future agenda items. We do have several future agenda items to preview. In October in committee, at P and P, we will be discussing the 2022 Summer School Presentation and get an update on data from this past year. We'll take a look at student achievement data as well as the proposed 2324 school calendar, as Dr. Herman mentioned. For F and F, Part Two of our capital outlay, outlay priority, 2022 Tax Levy Estimate, a school maintenance project grant, and the SR3 Title I Review. In November committee meetings, we will look forward to, for P and P, the 2022 Illinois School Report Card Presentation and the 2324 Curriculum Proposals. For F and F, we'll have an audit report, a public hearing on the 2022 Tax Levy, if necessary, and board adoption of the Certificate of 2022 Tax Levy. Finally, in November at committee F and F, we will look forward to resolutions to designate preparation of the tentative budget for fiscal year 2023 and the bills payable check release for the end of the year. And for the board meeting in December, is that not correct?
That's in December, not in November.
Did I say November?
You did.
My apologies. That will be for December of 2022. And that bills payable check release for the end of the year. And then for the board meeting, as Dr. Herman mentioned, there will be a report on action plans for the strategic plan. Any other future agenda items that we should address?
Dan, do you think we're going to be able to hear anything from Veragey by the next F and F committee meeting?
What do you mean?
Well, they'd like to get together again. Will we have a way to update on where we are in making a decision about moving forward with Veragey?
Perhaps we're trying to schedule a meeting this week. So we have a tentative.
So can we say a tentative placement on the agenda to just update?
Sure. So if we do have information that will be added to committee. Yeah, any other items?
I had one thought. It's always so nice to hear from students. Do we want to like have a student club come and present once in a while with work that they're doing? Because so many of them are doing such great work. It's a thought.
That would be fun.
I think the more student voice we can have at our meetings, the better.
It's a good experience.
The other thing that I think we could be doing is as we start to roll out some of the action plans would be to highlight students who are doing equity work or to highlight students who are aligned with exploring multiple pathways. So I think that's one other way to reinforce our goal areas and celebrate students who are, you know, taking on some challenging topics. I can work, I know we have student recognition. So maybe on months where we don't, don't have a student recognition, we could make sure that instead we inquire about a student organization that might want to present.
What are you thinking there, students?
Ari's got a thumbs up.
Yeah, we'll be looking for you to help us decide what, what might be some voices that would be good to have at the board table here.
I know. I'm just thinking about one of my clubs. I'm in the Dare to Empower Club. And as a very small club, sometimes it's hard to launch a lot of projects. But we have the ideas and we have the goals. And so I think it would be cool to leverage those goals and maybe start by coming here and presenting that. Because I know we've started kind of planning like luncheon learns and workshops we want to do. And we'd love to present and do something with the, and with the board. And I know that other students as well, like they'd be very interested in kind of having a voice. Because I know that a lot of students, sometimes they get drowned in like the busyness of all their clubs. And so it'd be kind of cool for them to come here and then speak about all the amazing things that they're doing.
Great. And I know that Dr. K and Dr. G have always been really great about helping select. I know all of you are super involved in clubs and extracurriculars and would love to see your clubs highlighted, which is one of the reasons why you're here. And I know that they'll be very helpful in terms of hearing your ideas about which clubs might be good for the board to hear more about in detail.
I also think that, at least I think, but I don't know if both schools have a principal's advisory board, but definitely the Libertyville High School Principal's Advisory Board. Some members would be really great to highlight some things that like we want to see changed and stuff like that. I know last year, the board did a big project with the whole cafeteria, both redesigning it and testing out new foods for it. And I think that that just really shows the power of students. And I thought that was super cool to see. And hopefully this year we'll be able to expand to have more student voices. So I think the Principal's Advisory Board, that could be a good club to feature.
Okay.
They have thoughts.
Sounds great. Look forward to hearing about it. Okay, then if we have no further future agenda items.
I have one more. I'm so sorry, just to bring up. And I had mentioned this at committee, but just wanted to make sure that it makes its way back around at some point that the board could see or hear, understand what the D128 School Safety Website is all about, when it goes live, what it will contain. I'm just curious.
Yes, we can definitely work on that and have an update, if nothing less, by October.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Thank you for the reminder.
Sure.
Okay, then if we're ready to move on to convene in closed session, if whoever would like to make the motion, we'll read the recommended action along with the school code to address the items that we'll be discussing.
Benjamin, I move to convene to close session to discuss collective negotiating matters, 5 ILCS 120/2C2 and employment of an employee, 5 ILCS 120/2C1. Thank you.
Carmichael, second.
Great. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Aye. Batson.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Colcarney.
Aye.
Great. Motion passes. We will convene in closed session in five minutes at 8:30. Now may I have a motion to return to open session?
Batson moved to return to open session.
Rooney, second.
Thank you. 8:54 PM. Roll call, please.
So many pieces.
Batson.
Aye.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Colcarney.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Motion passes and I.
I think you could have done a voice.
Missed the opportunity to voice vote, even though Carol reviewed it with me. That's right. Okay. Now we are going to take action. I'm looking for a motion to approve an updated memorandum of agreement.
Move to approve the memorandum of agreement, driver's education overload pay for the 2022, 2023 school year as discussed in closed session.
For the second?
Colcarney, second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Roll call, please. Voice.
Benjamin.
Aye.
Carmichael.
Aye.
Drumkey.
Aye.
Hessel.
Aye.
Colcarney.
Aye.
Rooney.
Aye.
Batson.
Aye.
Motion passes. Finally, I'm going to ask for a voice vote.
Well, first, motion.
Motion in a second. Okay, for adjournment, I need a motion in a second, please.
Batson moved to adjourn.
Carmichael, second.
Great. So we will do a voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries for adjourn.
Thank you, everyone.